Alrighty, it is 7:00 PM. I called the, what's the due date? On June 12th, 2018 Village of Port Edward's Board Meeting to order. And I would ask the clerk to call and roll.
Okay, Trustee Bingham.
Uh, President.
Trustee Duncan. Trustee Grunden.
Here.
Trustee Martinson.
Here.
Trustee Mitchell.
Here.
And Trustee Sailors.
And Trustee Duncan called me at 5:00. He was delayed by a court case he was on in Green Bay. So, he won't be here till then. And also, the village administrator is on a week's vacation. He's moving, closing on his house up in Barham County. And then on Wednesday, or tomorrow, or Tuesday, whatever. Today's Tuesday. Tomorrow, he closes on his house on Wisconsin River Drive that he bought. So, he will officially be a resident of the Village of Port Edward. We will now stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And we'll be allowed a brief moment to remember our fallen military personnel, as well as our fallen police officers, firefighters, and emergency medical technicians. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the glory of its strength, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, the May Village Board Meeting. Trustee Martinson, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? All those signified by saying aye in favor. Aye opposed, and motion carries. Okay, nobody has to speak tonight. At this time, we'll get a little bit more in detail. But Dale Marth is the head man with advanced disposal. And he's here to talk about our contract with them coming up under the CIRC Committee Minutes. Under President's report, I really don't have anything much. So, I will just quickly say I have nothing. And we'll move right into committee reports with the Airport Commission. Chairman Martinson.
The Airport Commission met on May 2nd. And they had a presentation from the Airport Manager Sickler regarding the airport, excuse me, the April report. They had updates on the development projects. And they also discussed the acquisition of welcome mats for transit aircraft part-time and volunteer employee opportunities and a minor aircraft accident which took place at the airport. The old business that was discussed was updating on, excuse me, updates on groundbreaking events scheduled for May 10th. And they also had discussed the event that's coming up on May 24th, which will be the Business After Hours event. And then the commissioners in the airport discussed the, preparing for that event and partnerships taking place. They considered a direction for airport marketing. Chairman Berling recapped a recent discussion he had with Laura Nelson from the WRACBB. And they also discussed the terminal improvements and exterior lighting and Saab. I will make a motion at this time to approve the minutes of the Airport Mission.
Second.
Second.
Second by Trustee Grunden. Any discussion? Without objection, I would like to reach out to Jeremy, the Airport Manager, because he hasn't been here now for like four months. It may be with all the new developments that are coming. If you guys would think it'd be worthwhile at our next board meeting. Or I could have him attend probably the CIRC meeting. It may be be of more value for the audience also at the Village Board. So, I will do that. Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Chairman Sailors, CIRC Committee.
You were up there. I was just thinking that, Eric. I was looking at you. We had a meeting on May 15th. Meeting called order at 5:00 PM. We had some citizen comments about some oak wilt over on Third Street. We're going to address that in the future. Dell Stewart gave us some updates on some public work stuff that's going on. The tuck pointing at the village garage is now done. We had a new employee that was hired. The summer help is hired and started. They had some cracks that they're going to be working on. And we had some new playground equipment that came in. We also discussed a water bill from Courtney Marks. And she's requesting some relief from the sewer charges incurred from that due to a leak. So, I'd like to make a motion to reduce that bill by $75 for that bill.
Motion had been made by Chairman Sailor to reduce a Courtney Marks water bill by $75 for the period dependent upon Badger Meter app notification. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
And then we discussed, we had Mr. Marks come in and he gave a presentation on advanced disposal about doing the carted pickup. Would you like to discuss that? Or does anybody have any questions on that?
Sure.
Dale, could you give a, just for the other board members that are not on the CIRC Committee? I appreciate that.
And if any of the board members who aren't in the committee, you know, would like to talk in the proposal, Michael sent that to you or not? Okay. Basically, what we're proposing is to convert the current pickup to what we call an automated service or cart service, where each household would have a cart for trash and a cart for Basically, we've done that in quite a few communities and converted that service. And that's gone well. Pretty much, I think some of the questions that were, came up from the committee meeting were related to bulky items and after the fact. I'm not sure if Mike let you know. But we would continue to do a bulky item pickup like about, we'll just pick a time once a month, you know, a particular day. And have those calls routed to us, you know, if an individual needs that pickup. So, that service will still be there. Pretty much, that's the basics of it. I don't know if there's any questions regarding that or something I forgot that one of the committee members wants to mention.
The carts belong to Advance. So, we get both of them, like, spent almost seven years.
Yeah, easily, you know, we'll replace as need be. I mean, winters are harsh in Wisconsin. So, we need to break, replace breakage, sometimes wheels come off, things like that. That's, that's our responsibility, so.
Is there a charge for the carts, for the individuals, for the residents? Is there a charge?
No. Well, I mean, other than the monthly, there's no charge for the carts.
To the individual resident?
Right. It's all part of the service.
So, currently, if I have this right, we don't have, we only got your contract right now.
Right.
So, we have not signed a contract in multiple years. So, the price, I don't know, what are we paying now?
I think it's around 11, yeah. And they would change to 12.20.
So, it'll look like a buck twenty.
Correct. And you are correct. It kind of been going year to year. There has not been an increase since 2003.
The administrator put together, excuse me, summary sheet. We're currently at 11.15, 12.20, I think will be the next one. And that date would start September 11th. And there will be information on the website and pamphlets that can be mailed out on training or where we put the carts and stuff like that.
Right. If you'd like, and/or, definitely, when we deliver. So, you should, you know, if everything goes okay, sometime late August would be.
Dale, if you would, would you explain the difference between regular pickup and bulk pickup?
Well, bulk pickup is basically couches, furniture, things like that, mattresses, another example. I think in the contract, it's defined as anything, you know, larger than a cart, you know, swing pools, things like that, you know, plastic swing pools, things like that that, that are a little bit larger than normal, so.
And I think here, we, there's going to be one day a month for that?
Correct. Yeah, we would probably just pick, you know, the third, whatever, and go with that.
Between you and Mike, the administrator?
Right. And we would put that on the education materials too, you know.
And I did have one question I know I asked you, I can't remember what the answer was, but how do you throw away an old trash can?
Yeah, one thing, I don't know if we talked about that, but one thing we could do is we could put a container in a, you know, the village garage or something if you'd like. Or we would pick them up curbside too. Recently, when we converted the city of Marshfield, we put a container at the city garage and then at our facility, we took them in. And I was surprised the number of people that actually took advantage of that. I never dreamed, but, you know, some new carts, some new garbage cans. But that's something that we can definitely, you know, consider if you'd like us to do that for those people.
So, I make a motion to, does anybody have any other questions or?
Thank you.
I make a motion to accept the advanced disposal contract at, what is it, 12? At 12:20, starting September 1st for the carted service. Second.
Okay, motion by Chairman Sailor, seconded by Trustee Bingham to approve the resolution, Agreement Resolution Contracting for Waste and Recycling Services with Advanced Disposal for the price of $12.20. And that's per household?
Correct.
Okay. Any discussion?
I know people have voiced concern about the size of the carts and getting them up in the driveway and stuff, but those bigger wheels, they're, they're actually very, if I have a full trash can, those wheels on mine, I mean, it's, it's easier. I have a mother-in-law in Jackson that has a two-motor.
Right. We get nice comments back from those people that, you know, that are kind of concerned about it beforehand. We hear nice back of how easy that is for them to move versus, like I said, moving bulk, multiple, you know, garbage cans, bags, recycling bins. It's really, you know, contained in those tubes.
So, we went right to the curb, right? Not at the end of the driveway because I probably would back over one.
I do have a question. What if an individual resident refuses to use the cart?
Um, I think, you know, initially, we'll try to tag that material and, you know, eventually, we need to get to the cart.
So, if you don't have a smaller cart, if there is an individual that would request one?
Well, they can, I mean, definitely don't have to put it out every, every collection. That's one option I've seen in other communities. But the problem with the smaller carts is then you have to worry with staff as far as switching them out. And some of them, the smaller ones, get kind of tippy. So, on a windy day, that's kind of why we've kind of decided that this is the best size.
Thank you.
If it becomes a problem, you probably have to bring that into review. How many cities in the area are using the carted service?
A significant amount. City of Marshfield, City of Medford, and then all the townships surrounding the city of Marshfield. Village of Auburnale, Village of Hewitt, so.
Oh, I am very impressed. Probably the number one way to give a point across about using the cart and what it entails is the village and town of Auburnale, of which you're the treasurer of Auburnale. That little brief video that, I wish we could have something like that, you know, and put it on WRCM. Because I mean, within the sight of the minute, it really answered a lot of questions.
Sure. Okay.
Any more discussion?
I think you pretty much answered what Luanne's question. Do I have comments made about can, can a person just put out their small little Walmart bag or whatever if that's all they have? It sounds like you're going to recommend that thing.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I did completely answer it. But I mean, because we try to work with that person, but really, when you start to do that, then it takes away any efficiency that you would have. It kind of defeats the purpose of being automated.
I would just respond to that. In our neighborhood, there's an elderly woman in her 90s and neighbors put her garbage out. I think we live in that type of community that we would reach out to your neighbor. I understand where you have to come from with the carts. You can't have random types of pickups. So, I understand the question will come up. People change is difficult. But I think it's a positive change and will, will be there. Anything else, Dave? Mr. President?
Kathy? What do we do with our old recycle bins or warming bins?
Any suggestions, Mr. Stewart? Are we just going to recollect them and recycle them? And they all have to think and try a lot about them?
Yeah, I mean, that's entirely up to the village. But one thing that personally that I've found since my community's been, you know, converted, it works great for grass and compost and things, taking, you know, items to the compost site. So, most people find it useful pretty easily.
So, they are parts to keep?
That's up to the board, but.
I'm not going to have a problem with that. Something that, could we get that under, could we just hold her out for right on?
Yeah.
Yeah. For you. We will discuss that. Who wants to?
Yeah, that's something we can include in the education, that if you let me know.
Answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? We had a motion by Chairman Sailor, seconded by Trustee Bingham to approve the Agreement slash Resolution Contracting for Waste and Recycling Services with Advanced Disposal Services for the $12.20 per household. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
May I make a point of order? We don't have the motion, the previous motion, on our agenda. The water bill, the water bill issue. First motion you brought forward from CIRC.
Oh, you're right. Out, asleep.
Trustee Grunden. Dr. I can't talk today.
It's not on the board agenda. It's in the committee, but the motion didn't approve at the committee, but it's not on the board agenda.
Yeah, good catch. So, we can't do it, right? Well, I had my research in state statute for the disposal thing because it was listed different in one than on the other. But under state statute, 1984-2, the state does not expressly require that the notices indicate whether a meeting, blah, 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 will purely be deliberative or if action had been taken. However, in this, in this matter, like, the one we just voted on is on both with a word difference in each one. So, it's not an intent to deceive anybody, which we're allowed by statute to let go forward. But based on the same statute, I'm going to have to, we're going to have to null and void it until the next board meeting.
When's the next water bill due? When's the quarter?
July.
We'll be doing the bills pretty soon.
So, we'll have a meeting on Tuesday, whatever date that will be next, a week from tonight.
Correct.
Thank you, ladies.
Last week, we discussed some splash grab and the other things. We took a tour of the village. And Dell and the administrator, Mike, we identified some problem areas on the streets. We tried to make a plan to come up with how we're, how we're going to attack that. So, that was about it. The meeting was, was adjourned at, I don't know, because too much was not provided.
Oh, I'm going to tear this apart.
It was like, oh, that's weird. So.
I'm going to read my watch.
So, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Chairman Sailor to approve the minutes of the meeting, seconded by Trustee Mitchell. Discussion? All those in favor? I just wanted to add, the, the tour was extremely valuable. And I appreciate Dell's guidance on that. Even though it got lengthy, Sue had her bike and she was concerned about the dirt. But it was good to see the problem areas identified and some priorities given and suggested. And I just want to thank Dell for doing that. That was, that was valuable to me and I'm sure to the committee. Any other discussion? And anybody that's interested in all things streets, pretty much, the CIRC Committee meeting that's going to be a week from tonight, we'll announce the time and everything shortly. That's the meeting to attend because you're going to be, a lot of information will be coming through on what hasn't been done, what should be done. It's going to be all based on what John just got to say about their, their road truck that they took. So. Okay, hearing no further requests to speak, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Eric, if you'll stay on and take planning, property, and information technology, please.
We had a meeting May 22nd. It was called order for 15. Just a few things that we discussed. To amend the Village Ordinance 2.03, Presiding Officer in absence of the Village President. I don't know if, Mr. President, you wanted to go into that and explain that or?
Sure. This, this was a brainchild of mine for quite a few years, being Chief of Police and then on the previous board also. It has to do with emergency situations and the proper procedures to go through. If we had a tornado or something like that and I was out of town, currently, we would have to call a board meeting. And then you guys would have to elect a fill-in president, basically. And if we have an emergency, that is highly improbable to happen. The state of Wisconsin has a pretty, pretty wide, broad concept of what they call the home rule for townships and, and villages. Meaning that, yes, statute does say if the presider is not there, that the meeting be called order by the clerk. However, that does not mean, on research by our attorney, Nick Apps, that you cannot establish a position, in this case, vice president, to handle those duties. In an emergency, and Chief is familiar with the NIM system and probably some others are too, procedures of, excuse me, handling emergencies via case that, in an incident command center, you have the village president or his designated, the clerk, the chief of police, the fire chief. And the fire chief, basically, would be the emergency management director in that case. And then the other, the police department takes care of, basically, you know, the crowd control or, or other stuff. So, it's based on the emergency preparedness that I found out as far as leadership goes, we're not prepared. I had this idea, Nick checked it out and it's perfectly legal for us to do. And I just think a office of vice president would be apropos in this situation. And what it basically is, is the common councils of cities elect their own president. Okay? The mayor does not appoint that. In this case, the village president would not appoint a vice president. He can, and he cannot vote or outside of calling, running the election for a vice president. But he can't vote or do anything else. So, if I have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer about this time. But that is my, you know, we might never need it. But if we do, it's good to have a system in effect. Yes?
So, are you saying that the board would vote in that position for the community?
The board only, not the village president. It's, it's kind of like what they call the peer among peers. So, that's what.
I have a question, too. So, is that something that the administrator can handle or do we have to?
He is also there, but he's not, he's not, case in point, if I were to be gone and we had, God forbid, a disaster, the vice president has the authority, 48 hours by state statute, authority to ask the clerk or direct the clerk to write a check for this equipment that we need and to direct all the other operations. They're kind of like coordinating with the police chief, fire chief. I'm sure emergency management has somebody down there, the administrator. He is, his sole role in that situation is getting the, what we need to do the job. So. And then after 48 hours, the village board would meet. And then that's your decision, the village board, to extend that emergency time or to end it. And then go as we do on our usual meetings.
Okay, so I make a motion to amend Village Ordinance 2.03, the Presiding Officer in absence of the Village President as presented.
Second.
Motion by Chairman Sailor, seconded by Trustee Grunden to approve Resolution Contract, geez, no, we don't want to approve Dale's stuff here again. To amend Village Ordinance 2.03, Presiding Officer in absence of the Village President as presented. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. And I'll draw your attention down to item nine, Area A. You will have an election tonight. And then in April, at our informational meeting where we reorganize committees and such, that's when this will be inserted and taken care of then. So, something for the five of you to think about. And you could put somebody in that isn't here, but. I didn't like that laugh.
Well, so this doesn't take, even though we're changing the ordinance tonight, we're not going to do the, actually vote or do this, select this.
Nick said we can't.
Until April.
No, that's when, that's when it will officially, that's when you would generally do it. But Nick said nothing precludes us from doing it tonight.
Okay, I misunderstood. April screwed me a little bit.
Yeah, so next April rolls around, you'll do it all again.
Oh, okay. All right. On here also, we got the setback, motion to a setback. I don't see that on the board agenda either. Back to 25 feet. And that is not on the board agenda. That was to amend the R3L from back to 25 feet. So, that might be something we have to track till next month also.
That is correct. Thank you.
So, we did have Mr. Cronk, Dr. Cronk, it is retiring in July. The end of June for clients and by August 1, Dell wasn't able to retire. So, we discussed some, some options to the future use of his space over there. And I'd like to make a motion to utilize, let me make sure that this is ready. Motion to utilize the vacant space in the Medical Arts Building for a boardroom slash meeting office as well as a secure storage area.
Motion by Chairman Sailor to utilize the vacant space in Medical Arts Building as read. Is there a second? Second by Trustee Mitchell. Discussion? Go ahead.
So, would that take some remodeling? What, has there been any discussion about like what that would?
That definitely will take care of some remodeling. It's way too early to talk. That definitely will take care of some remodeling, it's way too early to talk. Dell and I have discussed, Dell, you want to?
I have two contractors coming in this week to walk through the building and discuss remodeling it, to have a cost so that it can be available come budget time to whether you're going to approve to do it or not to do it. So you'll have some numbers.
And who is storing what or, I mean, what?
The secure storage is for the police department.
Well, the main thing is for the village boards, we have a comfortable place to be, okay? We'll go off table, but first we're going to stay on table, okay? The basic thing is, is we're not a band of traveling minstrels, so to speak. We're going to have a home. The village board comes first. Another nice thing is the current office of Dr. Cronkite would make a very nice trustee room, so you would have access to your own computer there and a place, you know, if you can't do the work at home, a quiet place to go. And then it's naturally set up from years ago, back probably in the 1940s when they built it, that Chief's problem is a secured storage area, period. If she has that, then she's got four rooms over there she can make do with. We're not that big of a department. So, and the secure storage area is already got a, it's a furnace room now, but behind the furnace room is an old door archway. So it'll be separate to the police department, no access to that from the board side, the current office side. So it solves one problem and it gives us someplace to call home since we lost the municipal building. Let me cut that in half to make an office over there, so, yeah.
So I assume Dr. Cronkite has been paying rent?
Yes, sir.
And so that's a loss of, not a large amount of revenue, but some.
Yeah, it is.
So we're assuming that space. So we're not, we have no desire to possibly have someone go in there?
No, that's another option also.
I mean, not, not for the rent purpose, just for the, being a viable location. I don't know if there's any desire by anybody to do that, but I like the idea, don't get me wrong, I like the idea of storage, I like the idea of the board area.
Dell and I took a tour with a member of the staff that currently works there, and for another business of that sort to come in, there's pretty high cost to remodeling because what they do today is a lot different than what they did back then. But I'm not totally opposed if, in fact, that was discussed by Mike too, about maybe we should just mark it and see what happens. But personally speaking, after the tour, you can still do it, but.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, John?
I might to assume that no effort has been made then to get a replacement. If it's all remodeled and we do get a replacement sometime, even two years down the line, a dentist wants to come in, then does he have to build his own building or do we renovate that again or what?
Well, speaking for myself, was this a boardroom, securely stored area? It would remain that? Again, the conversation, Dell and I, feel free to find these out. The difference between the equipment of today as opposed to, you know, with Doc going out and somebody else coming in, on our part, it's going to involve quite a bit of remodeling. We will have to do that. And for what you would have to charge in rent, I do personal feeling, I don't think we're going to get anybody to rent it because it would at least be double of what our car price paid. But again, if we're decided they want to do that before we move forward, that's an option. We're going to basically be paying for remodeling.
Do any of you pull teeth? Oh, no. Do any of you pull teeth? I'm getting to the point where I might need that.
Holiday next, company express last night.
I do have a question. If we approve this this evening and if we find that the remodeling is an excessive amount of money that we don't, I mean, would we still have a chance to discipline, you know, to move forward with something, some other choice, even though we choose this tonight? I guess I'm concerned because we don't really have any figures, you know, and I'm just throwing this out, is it going to be $10,000 or is it going to be $25,000? And I'm just throwing it out there.
No, that's a good point. If it's going to cost the remodeling for an open area boardroom is taking out temporary walls that are in there because this building is supported by steel girders up top to begin with. The chair would entertain a motion, and I will read it to you, to amend the motion to utilize the vacant space in the medical arts building for a boardroom slash meeting office as well as a secure storage area. I'm looking for help if feasible. We can't put a cap on it because we don't know.
Right.
To, to maybe somehow we got to word it as to, yeah, John?
Well, not to interrupt, I'm sorry. If we just take utilize, I'll say review, to review the vacant space, which basically that's what we're doing because if Dell comes back with, as Lou I mentioned, a figure we're not comfortable with, we're probably going to go, well, you know, we'll have to examine it further. Does that solve it or?
Or to say it's budgetarily feasible?
Well, but that's.
Because we still have to go back then, budget time.
How good would it be?
I think the concept of what is being proposed is good. And so I'm not opposed to it, it's just that we need to know, again, how much and, you know, I would, I guess I've always, and I'm 20 years or maybe I'm 30,000 feet up, I'm not in the clouds, but I always look at, you know, and the chief knows, I was, I always looked at the chief, the public, you know, the public safety, being in one area, you know, and are we moving away from that conceptually? And I know we're looking at the short term, but I don't know if we should look at the long term. I don't want to muddy the waters because I do support the utilization as suggested. So I guess I'm saying a couple of different things, but I would like to review it.
She will be all in one area. Doors will be boarded up, become walls and only access, she's gaining a room on her, she'll be an L shape.
And that's good, that's good. I don't have a problem with any of that. So how do we address?
All right, I'm going to throw this out there and I'll even make the motion, although I do not like to make motions at board meetings, to review the vacant space in the medical arts, now remember, this is an amendment to the motion. Start over. Motion to review the vacant space in the medical arts building for a boardroom and meeting office as well as a secure storage area for the PD, pending remodeling estimates. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Bingham. Now we are going to first vote on the amended motion, and if that fails, then we must vote on the original motion. If the amended motion passes, then the matter settles. Any other discussion? Here is no request to speak. All those in favor of the amended motion will signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, and that's how we'll go based on our cost estimates, Dell.
Okay. Okay, Eric. We received some correspondence, we discussed, and that was it. The meeting was adjourned at 5:00 PM. I didn't know. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion by Chairman Saylor, second by Trustee Bingham, approve the minutes of the meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Public safety.
The public safety committee met on May 24th, and I do see that on the minutes, there was a motion, but again, on the agenda this evening, there is no motion, other than just to approve the minutes. Motion that's on the minutes is regarding semi trucks.
I don't know, that shouldn't have been listed as a motion when the minutes are taken. That was just to study the matter further about trucks on Port Road. Was that not the case, Chief? Was not to make a motion to establish a rule for the PD that will be out there?
Correct. I just asked that if we looked at by Cert, Cert for signage, so however that needs to be addressed.
It's going to be on our agenda for the next meeting.
On Cert? Yeah, highway, okay, yeah. All right, I was going to add that.
And so with that being said, we did discuss signage regarding the semi trucks on Port and Seneca Roads, which will be reviewed at a later date. We also discussed the staffing and hiring of part-time officers, and we discussed, or we evaluated moving one of the part-time employee, excuse me, officers up in hours so that he would be eligible for the WRS. And Mr. Corman was going to investigate that.
What was your thing about WRS again?
The part-time, evaluating a part-time officer to make him eligible for the WRS.
Oh, so you're not going to do that automatically?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Corman is going to investigate the financial impact of that.
Okay, thank you.
And, excuse me? Oh, I'm sorry.
Actually, and I agree with Luann, it was, and it was an idea, it was actually for increased usage of workers rather than, and by doing that, I just want to make sure that the public understands, we didn't do it to put him in WRS, but we will have to if we increase his hours to use him to the maximum. So we were just evaluating the cost. Does that make, did I muddy it? But it was to give increased protection rather than give him a W. By giving increased protection, shut up, John. By giving increased protection, he will move into being eligible for WRS, and we will see what the cost would be.
But we're not, we're going to get the other two hired, so we have four.
That's correct.
I thought we were just giving up on that and just going to go this route. Workers route for WRS, but that's not the case.
It was decided that we were going to have Mike Corman look at the financial impact of that.
But we're still in the process of hiring the two?
Absolutely, yes. Any more discussion? There was a request for Lon Radke to attend school resource officer conference. That was also just for discussion. And we had correspondence that we talked about.
What about, there's another motion on here that's not on the agenda or another social party?
And I was just going to say that, but thank you.
That was for what? I'm sorry. Notes in for, sure.
There is another motion on the agenda, or on the minutes, rather, that is not appearing on the agenda regarding approval for Nick Dawson, pending background check and physical.
Mind, this is my bad here, like, for who?
Nick Dawson?
Oh, for the fire department?
Yes. And that agenda, that is not on our agenda this evening.
Just going to wait till July?
Okay. Make a note to move that to July. I guess I take this, we did discuss the workers' comp claim, and other than that, the meeting was adjourned at 6:20 PM. With that, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
Second by Trustee Mitchell to approve the minutes of the meeting, discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Keep it in, FHR.
Thank you. FHR met on June 7th, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the journal entries of the previous month.
Motion by Martinson, second by Saylor, approve the journal entries of the previous month. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
We discussed Trustee Saylor's time in service and preparing the Chromebooks for us, and at this time, I would like to make a motion to approve payment of $500 for Trustee Saylor's time in preparing the Chromebooks.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Bingham to offer to or pay Trustee Saylor $500 for his work in setting up our Chromebooks. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the state. The state? That motion carries. And Eric, thank you very much. Yes, it's well, very much appreciated.
I'm sorry. I'd also like to make a motion to the payment of the bills.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Saylor for payment of the bills. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
We discussed the swimming lesson partnership with YMCA, and I'd like to make a motion to continue the swimming lesson partnership with YMCA, not to exceed 100 spots for $2,500.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by Trustee Bingham to continue the swimming lesson partnership with YMCA, not to exceed 100 spots, excuse me, or the $2,500 limit. Discussion, very popular program in the village. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
We discussed the benefit retirement policy that is already in practice. It has been taken, it has been in practice for the last few years, actually a number of years, and two previous individuals who retired, one that retired from the village and one that left the village employment, were both paid a severance at the end of their working years. This is just something that we have to clear up as far as making sure that it is now a policy. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to replace the current retirement policy with the new severance retirement benefit policy that was put into effect by previous practice. And that is to pay, for each year, the individuals have to work 10 years in order to receive the severance, and if they've worked 10 years and they leave the village or they retire, they will receive for every year of service, one hour at their current paid scale.
Motion by Chairman Martinson to replace the current retirement policy with the new severance slash retirement benefit policy that was put into effect by the previous board and by two people already retired or fees already collected. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman, Trustee Mitchell. Any discussion? I would just like, yeah?
Oh, I just wanted to ask a question, please.
Go ahead.
So 10 years, you make $30 an hour, $300. Okay, just so I.
I had 37 years at $28.98.
Is that, I would ask Luann, is that a common practice based on your background in HR?
I don't know about city or village practices, but I know in the, in the private sector, it is common. After a certain amount of years of service.
So this has only been used twice?
Correct.
Three now?
Well, three, I'm sorry, yes, with.
Recent.
Yes. Thank you.
Further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries.
We had a conversation with Administrator Corman regarding the reimbursement of professional services incurred on behalf of DMI, which has been held in escrow and has been looked into. into. He will also do some research and explore some different possibilities regarding our copy machine, which is on a flask leg. And with that being said, the last item was that Administrator Corman is also going to be working on TIF budget process and grants. The meeting was adjourned at 5:49, and at this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second. Motion by Chairman Martinson, second by trustee Bingham to approve the minutes of the FHR committee. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, I have no unfinished business from our last meeting with anybody else. Okay, we'll move into new business, and this has to do with the election of the vice president of the village board. Procedure in this is you can nominate yourself, you do not need seconds for nominations for this type of an election, okay? And if we have multiple, we keep voting until we get it down to a workable number. If we have three that are nominated, we vote, and we keep voting until there is a majority. In this case, it would be four votes, even though Dana's not here, it must be four out of five. So that is something to keep in mind. Of course, after the first ballot or any ballot, anybody that's nominated can remove their name from nomination, or cannot, or can say, no, I don't accept it, you know, to begin with somebody else would nominate you. Okay, then we vote by secret ballot, and the clerk is the official ballot counter. Okay? Anybody have any questions before we proceed?
So just to get this straight, this is just in case of emergency?
It's what?
Just in case of emergency. That's what we kind of.
Read chapter one, section seven, 1.07, and that's where all my phobias kind of came about at that time. So, the chair will recognize nominations.
I nominate Luann Martinson.
Are there any other nominations?
I nominate Dana Duncan.
Are there any other nominations? And for the third and final time, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, oh, then take a motion to close nominations. Second, second by Bingham and Mitchell. Okay, the motions are closed. So we have Dana Duncan and Luann Martinson for vice president. So five of you will be voting.
So do we need to know, like, does Dana need to know he's been drafted? Or does Luann need to say, I am willing to do that?
It's called a railroad, Dana. No, you don't have to know. You can nominate somebody not in a meeting. Now, he has a right to turn it down, of course, but.
That's why we need to know.
I'm sorry. Then if you just fold them a couple of times and pass them back this way, I'll give them to the clerk.
Trustee Martinson. Trustee Duncan. Trustee Duncan. Trustee Martinson. And trustee Duncan.
Okay, we will have a second ballot. That one was three to two, and you must have more than, our normal numbers are six, so we will have to do her again.
I'll bring more paper, please.
We'll make some. Oh, actually, people appear. I want to tear that off. What's that?
It's the same three in a row that appeared.
Okay, this will be ballot two, and same two people are still a nomination and have kept themselves a nomination. Tear it off.
We're not gonna go to my truck.
We serve pizza at 10 o'clock, just.
The hair is raising on the back of Dana's neck, right? Trustee Martinson. Trustee Martinson. Trustee Martinson. Trustee Duncan. Trustee Duncan.
This will be the third ballot. We did this on the county board, and we had one guy drop off after we walked the seventh ballot.
Trustee Martinson. Trustee Duncan. Trustee Martinson. Trustee Duncan. Trustee Duncan. Can I back out? I will.
You're sure?
I'm sure.
Okay, trustee Martinson has withdrawn her name from nomination, so therefore, by popular acclaim, those in favor of trustee Duncan as the vice president signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Dana will find out soon that he is not the vice president. Clerk Treacher.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to approve a Class A beer and a Class A liquor retail license for BK Oil Inc., Martin Phillips, 66, at 421 State Highway 73, Nacusa, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So move. Motion by trustee Bingham, second by trustee Saylor, to approve the motion to, for a motion to approve Class A beer and Class A liquor retail license at BK Oil, and as further stated by the clerk. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd ask for a motion to approve operators licenses for BK Oil Inc. for Aaron Dean, Trevor Phelps, Michaela McCrossan, Barbara McSiva, and Michelle Wold, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So move. Motion by trustee Bingham, second by trustee Mitchell to approve operators licenses for BK Oil Incorporated for the, for five individuals listed, and the rest is read and validity by the village clerk. Discussion, vote back on trust. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'd ask for a motion to approve a cigarette and tobacco products retail license for BK Oil Inc., Martin Phillips, 66, at 421 State Highway 73, Nacusa, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
So move. Second. Motion by trustee Martinson, second by trustee Bingham to approve a, we're on C, right? Prove the cigarette and tobacco license also for BK Oil at 421 State Highway 73, valid for the times read by the village clerk. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And also, I'd ask for a motion to approve a Class A beer and a Class A liquor retail license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC at 251 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Chair will entertain a motion. What motion? Motion by trustee Saylor.
Second.
Second by trustee Martinson to approve a Class A beer and Class A liquor retail license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC, 251 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, from July 1, 2018 through June 30, 2019. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, I'd also like to ask for a motion to approve an operator's license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC for Melissa Marcelino, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Motion by trustee Mitchell. Second. Second by trustee Saylor. Discussion.
I take it she's an employee there, is that correct?
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the motion to approve the operator's license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC for Melissa Marcelino, valid from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd ask for a motion to approve a cigarette and tobacco products retail license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC, 251 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2018.
So move. Motion by trustee Martinson. Second. Second by trustee Saylor to approve the cigarette and tobacco products retail license for Port Edwards Boutique and Craft Mall LLC, 251 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, valid from July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Discussion.
Yes, sir, we just do that this, what, two or three months ago?
Yes, but they expire on June 30th.
So it doesn't matter when you get home that expires?
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'd ask for a motion to approve a Class B beer and a Class C wine license for Austin Steiner, 221 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Motion by trustee Grundon.
Second.
Second by trustee Bingham. Motion to approve Class B beer and Class C wine license for Austin Steiner, 221 Market Avenue, Port Edwards, valid from July 1, 2018 to June 30th, 2019. Discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and finally, I'd like to ask for a motion to approve an operator's license for Austin Steiner for Jessica Miller, valid from July 1st, 2018 to June 30th, 2019.
Moved. Motion by trustee Grundon.
Second.
Second by trustee Bingham. On a motion to approve an operator's license for Austin's diner for Jessica, diner for Jessica Miller, valid July 1, 2018 to June 30, 2019. Any questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we now go on to the committee calendar, and I forgot my book at home, so I'm gonna have to wing this. Our next meeting will be, our, the next committee meeting will be in the skirt meeting on Tuesday the 19th. Somewhere I have something that'll tell me a calendar. Excuse me. Okay, it'll be on the 19th, right, Eric, at 5:00 PM? That's Tuesday, Eric. At the municipal building?
Yes, that is.
For SIR.
Yeah, right. No, no, yeah, no, that's Tuesday.
Okay, then our next committee meeting will be June 26th, Tuesday, 5:00 PM in the municipal building, and that will be for the pit. And then we go to June 28th, which is also at 5:00 PM in a municipal building for public safety. And then we are going to go to July, oh, the heck, is that the 10th? On July 10th at 6:30 PM here at Edwards Alexander Park, we will have the FHR meeting, is that what you ladies agreed to set up? And then on the 10th at 7:00 PM here at Edwards Alexander, we will have the July village board meeting. 6:30 for FHR, 7 o'clock for the village board meeting. I will be at SIR, Chairman Saylor. I will not be at PIT, public safety, because I will be one.
Will you be at the next, pardon? Will you be at the next?
I should be back, yes, I should be back. Does anybody have any other odds and ends they want to tie up? Dell, anything to mention?
No.
Okay, Chief Iverson? Chief Hart, nothing already? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Move by Chairman Mitchell, second, trustee Mitchell, second by trustee Grundon, you stand.